All right. Tonight is Wednesday, September 1st, 2021. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting for District 96 School Board. Kathy, can you call the room?
Ms. Murphy? Here. Mr. Marvel?
Here.
Mr. Barsati?
Present.
Mr. Merhead?
Here.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Board members present.
Okay, great. At this time, is there any public comment?
No, there is not.
All right. Then next, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
Wait. Let's see, Remesh is here.
She's first. I got that right this time.
Making sure. I knew we all made that comment last time. I wanted to make sure we lived up to it. But no, there's no change.
These first year facilities are...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on to committee reports. The first one is the Facilities Committee.
I think we're referring this to Remesh's report.
So I'm going to talk about the progress we have on construction over the last month and a half at both Central and Hollywood. So the most challenging project was Central. We started off with, well, there's excellent news on that front. We have our occupancy on that. We passed all the tests that were required. The fire marshal's team was trained on the new system today, and so was the school district's engineers. So we're making really good progress on that one towards closeout now. We are in closeout documentation at this time. And as I mentioned last time, we have almost $80,000 coming back to us. We did not use most of the allowance money. The only allowance money that we used was for a failed valve at Hauser, which we had talked about earlier. And that was replaced. It was a really good move that we did because if that valve had failed during the school year, the school would have to be shut down. So we replaced that in time, and we drew the money from our allowance, and we should be getting that significant money as a refund back. So that's the... And the contractor for that project was Tandem. Excellent contractor, did a very good job, very well managed project, on top of things at all times. So that was the first part. Moving on to Hollywood. Hollywood, the challenge out there was that even though the project was small, it had all the trades that would be encompassing a much larger project. So you had masonry, mechanical, electrical plumbing, you had all the trades coming in. And right now, we face enormous supply chain constraints in the sense that the schedule that was given to us at the beginning of the project in April and May, which indicated, for example, that we had lead times of 12 and 16 weeks for critical items, like the rooftop unit, it doubled. It ended up being 20, 24 weeks. In fact, our rooftop units are arriving tomorrow morning at 6:00 a.m. It should have been here mid-July. So the reason for it, the contractors, the subcontractors actually told us was it's not just one part of the rooftop unit. There could be controls that could be missing, that could be coming from a different vendor. So there's no point putting the main unit in if you're not getting the controls. If you get the controls, then you need to make sure electrical is coordinated with it. So there was a lot of coordination that had to happen. So the problem that we faced with Hollywood has been supply chain related, number one. And number two is, if you recall, we talked about the fact that we had an environmental issue out there which we dealt with on an emergency basis. And we are looking to close that project out right now, which was to get an EPA clearance and a no further action required letter based on the removal of the pipes that contained the hazardous fluids. All that has been disposed of suitably, and we hope to get an EPA letter within about 60 to 90 days. Our environmental consultant is on that project right now, working on that. We had a makeup schedule discussion with the contractor this morning. So the plan is to get a temporary occupancy on the addition by early October. So we're looking, over the next five weeks, we are going to look towards getting a temporary occupancy. That does not mean everything is completed, but we can occupy the building beneficially. For example, one of the elements is the operable windows that the board had requested we add to the contract because we are in a different pandemic world. That's not arriving till mid-November. But we can still open the building because we'll have temporary operable windows in place. So there are parts of it that are going to get finished up soon. There are other parts that are going to get delayed. I want to point out that this weekend, we intend to pave the site. The project will look a lot more complete once that's done. Once fencing starts up, the fencing contractor needs about seven days. But the challenge is, the school year has begun. You can't make noise, you can't work, you know? It's much more difficult. So I've asked them to work off-hours Saturdays. That's how we're going to try and make this project happen. But we will get there. So I would say the next four to five weeks are critical. The playground equipment manufacturer was supposed to ship yesterday the equipment. He called us up last week to say that there's a minimum three-week delay. So that's under the supply chain bottleneck that we've hit. But there's no guarantee when he's going to ship it. But it could be late September. But once it arrives, it's a two-week install. So our plan is to get this building occupied by October and move from there.
Any questions?
Well, let's see. So some of these supply chain delays, I think, what was it? Windows, not the windows that we purchased until November. And I think you said they were temporary windows? Are those something that we've purchased or the builder is providing?
No. So the initial design for the project had windows similar to what you see at Ames. If you recall, we had a discussion of this in March and April. We said, you know, why wouldn't we have operable windows so that we can get fresh air in? So we added that as an alternate in our contract when we bid it out. And the board decided to accept the alternate when we awarded the contract to Apex. When they placed the order for it, we were told that the lead time was a minimum six months. So now that six months is more like eight months because we placed the order in mid-May. We are supposed to have received it by, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And now they're saying it's, the earliest delivery on this is like November. We only talked about six units. They're small units, but we install temporary units to get, so that we can occupy the building. The shell of the building is complete. If you drive by, you'll notice the shell is done. But the curtain wall will start being installed next week. It'll start to look a lot more complete with the paving done. So that's the way.
So I guess my concern with November timeframe and then potentially longer after that, if we have a site that's not fully complete, if temperatures start to dip tremendously, is that going to be an issue or...
No, it will not because, as I mentioned, the rooftop unit's arriving tomorrow. So once that's installed and once the curtain wall's installed, we can condition the space. So then the space is done, we're good. And the exterior paving is getting done this weekend. So there's a sequence, obviously, in the sense that we need to get the paving done so that the landscaper can move in. So we're looking at somewhat an ideal time. It's okay. It's just that we were supposed to finish the entire project last week. And now we're looking at a minimum of about 40 to 50 days of time extension. The contractor's asked for that extension, but we're not recommending it yet till we get a full, fully satisfied that they can deliver in those 50 days. Because we don't want to get into an account where we give them another extension. But they're claiming that it's beyond their control and the supply chain is all blocked up. But we are sympathetic to a certain extent, but we knew what we were getting into when we started the project, so...
So if we grant extensions, that's something that's going to add to the cost or that's cost neutral?
It's cost neutral.
Okay.
There is no change on any of those costs. We've only approved one change order right now for this contractor. So far, nothing else is showing up. So it was well within what we could expect on a project of this. The biggest one, of course, is going to be the environmental remediation. We haven't received those numbers yet because part of the process is that the soils that were removed from site have to be disposed off correctly. We will not accept that till we see what's called a waste manifest from the waste site because that shows that it was legally disposed and we don't have any exposure. It is very important that we get that document. Without that, we will not approve a change order. So I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, I guess along the lines with the playground equipment, if it's, we don't know when it's coming in yet. Is there a date or approximate date where construction for outdoor playgrounds would have to shut down?
Not really because the equipment can be installed even in pretty bad weather. But the foundations for them, the posts have to be drilled in. So our plan is that if it arrives by the end of this month or even early October, we can move in really quickly to install the posts. We can work almost into mid-December. You know, the temperature is viable because the ground does not freeze solid till, you know, the first or second snowfall. So we've got some time.
Okay.
So Remesh, I might have missed this, but those temporary windows, does that mean we can still start, students can still occupy that space with the temporary windows? Is that correct or did I miss something?
That is correct. That is correct. We're going to get temporary occupancy of the multipurpose room. Yes.
So temporary occupancy means student use?
Yes. It means beneficial use to the school. Yes.
And I guess one other question I have is, and you probably know this better than I. So I have my own supply chain issues in my day job. And we've seen things, say, we say like August, and then we're looking at October, and then October comes, we're looking at possibly another month. I mean, how serious is this supply chain? I mean, are we going to be, is it going to be, are we going to see the playground equipment when we're supposed, when they say they are? Or is it going to be put, is there a likelihood that this will continually be pushed out?
The statement that we received from the vendor was, there's a minimum of three weeks delay. So he did not commit to a delivery date. So you're right, it is an open-ended commitment at this time. But on the other hand, if you remember last time when I appeared before the board, I mentioned there were supply chain issues. I said the rooftop unit was a problem. I mentioned that. Well, it's here. So some of the contractors have pushed and managed to get the product in. So if we are positive and optimistic, we should be able to get the playground equipment on-site by the end of this month. But you never know. There could be, there were other items that were looking like big delays, like curtain wall. They're here. It's here. We got the measurements done, in fact, last week. The initial frame is already up, and we are going to be installing next week. It was looking at a September 15 installation. We are doing it in the first week of September. So it's a bit of a give and take. Some of them we are losing, others, but by the next month, you get pulled back on other elements. So I would say overall, we'll get there. It's just that I can't give you a firm date.
No, I understand.
But it's a lot of construction, as you can see. I mean, the project is coming along. And the fact that we've held the costs, I think, is a huge task.
To be able to do that with delays...
That's correct.
To push those, that the contractor's accepting those costs is just part of his doing business is a big deal.
Correct. And the vendors have come back and asked us for additional monies. They could easily have said that, you know, when I bid this job in April, it was X, and now I'm paying 1.5X, or they could have walked away. I mean, you can have that problem. So far, we've not run into any of those problems. Typically, they're smaller contracts, so they're likely to hold it, to be fine. If you're on a larger project, it could have been a challenge. Steel was one. It was a disaster this year. If you recall, in May and June, prices were doubling and tripling. It's stabilized now, so...
Anything else?
All right. Thanks, Remesh. Thanks, Joel. All right. The next committee up is the Policy Committee.
And let me know perhaps what the best way to approach them all should be. But obviously, the most recent press issue, 107, that came out in June, you know, we're presenting it for the first read. And Martha and I had an opportunity to meet prior to this meeting to review this issue. And included in the agenda are the updates that are pertinent to our district's policy manual. So I don't know if we go through them one by one or we just do them in grouping in terms of, you know, they're separated by those that have some updates and then those that are up for just the five-year review. There is a new one to our district to discuss. And then just in going through policy, we also came across an existing policy that didn't have to do with press that we might want to consider updating at this time.
I think in the past, we haven't really gone through each one. We kind of, like, if there's some that you think are pretty important to stress, then I would highlight those.
Yeah.
And then anybody who had questions on any of the other ones? Is that how we've been doing that?
Yeah. Because the five-year updates that only change the footnotes or the legislative backgrounds, we're going to pass no matter what anyway. It doesn't change the text.
I don't think there'd be much discussion on the others.
Yeah, the first grouping, those that required the updates, the first reading, you know, in reviewing them on the board's behalf, they all looked, you know, appropriate. We would recommend that we should adopt. The only one, it appears that it was originally, and I'm not sure if we discovered why it had not been adopted, but Policy 6145 for migrant students, which originally came out, I believe, in October of 2016, and is not one that this district adopted at the time. In, you know, in reviewing it, I don't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts. You know, I see no reason why we would not perhaps adopt it with the current, as it stands now with the updates. I actually just saw D-95 adopted it August 12. D-208, the high school, just adopted it at their August 10 meeting. But D-102, LaGrange, had adopted it back in 2016 in December when it came out, so...
Yeah, I don't remember hearing about this one.
Yeah, I don't know if we...
That's interesting.
And we couldn't find in our minutes a reason why we may or may not have adopted them. I think it's considered optional, but Stephanie, I think you presented it well. And, you know, it's helpful also to hear the work that other districts are doing with this policy. So thank you.
Yeah, I don't remember it being mentioned even. So this is good that we're finally looking at it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any...
Well, so for the circumstance, what necessarily, or what is considered a migrant? Are these kids who are experiencing homelessness or these are...
I think it's separate. I know we have a separate policy on the book for, you know, homeless students, but this falls within like a defined federal, like migrant program. So I think parents, perhaps, who are here as migrant workers and have their children along with them would be considered, you know, migrant children. So as defined federally along...
Not necessarily anything to do with legal status or...
No, not like undocumented or legal permanent resident or, you know, anything like that. It's not, it doesn't have to do with citizenship or residency. It just has to do with being part of this program. So it is a little bit more niche, but you never know.
And it's very straightforward.
From a philosophical perspective, you know, why wouldn't we provide this thing if a student did meet the definition of a migrant student through this program?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially engaging their parents and guardians, that's a normal...
Yeah, it's a very straightforward policy. And we should probably have it if that situation arises, so...
Yeah, I don't know if through a first read, anybody had any other thoughts or questions? I'm assuming then it would just make its way in the next of the regular business meeting to...
Yeah, so it looked like a lot of them had to do with either, is it, I'm going to pronounce it wrong, SOPDA. I don't know, is there like a way to say it? I'm looking at David because I feel like he would know. That just went into effect.
SOPA, yeah.
So it looks like a lot of the policies have, just are updated for that. And then, like, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of major legislation that happened where the policies are affected. It's like SOPA. I was going to say SOPA.
I know, I always say SOPA.
I was like, I'll just spell it. And then the other one was the employment.
Yeah. Some legislation about... Based on some legislation that changed the conviction records and employment decisions. That imposes no obligations on employers, Illinois employers, including school districts.
Yeah, so I think those are all very straightforward and not really in need of a lot of conversation personally, but important, but...
Martha, did we receive Title I awards on...
We do.
So we have to adopt this way of policy according to the statute of mandatory?
Yeah, we look at the state board of ads, it falls under Title I and then EL services too. So, you know, one thought in terms of ways to think forward about implementation that our EL teachers might be the ones that would identify students and then provide those additional supports as well.
Any other thoughts or questions on those that fall under requiring updates?
To recap, Linda, recap, I think there's another one that we don't really have much of a choice.
No.
Or there's nothing really changing that's...
Doesn't seem like it.
Yeah, I mean, and some of the changes I thought, you know, made sense and aligned, like the one including words importing, you know, gender being added is based on the diversity, equity, and inclusion work and feedback that's been received. Yep, there was nothing I thought that was of concern. It seemed pretty straightforward and/or, yes, things that we would have to adopt, but also makes sense to do so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Similarly, and probably even less, lessed, was the, those are requiring, they just said general five-year review. So those also just looked very straightforward. There was no significant changes or anything that I identified in my conversations with Martha that we saw. Just the standard ones, I guess, that need the five-year review.
Well, I did have one question, and there's one, colon, 20, which talks about intergovernmental agreements. Do we need to update? I assume we need to update that for any of our agreements with the villages, et cetera? Because this only mentions the LANSI.
That's a good, yeah, that would be a good catch, Joel.
It says it covers joint programs and intergovernmental agreements with units of local government and other school districts, so... Is, or is there a way to have a reference in here to ongoing agreements rather than listing them?
To make it more evergreen.
Yes, exactly. I like that term.
I guess we should expand that.
Well, you either expand it or take out specific references.
Or figure out the evergreen reference.
You can take out the last one.
You can even, I mean, they also live on the website. Oh, no, wait. Somewhere.
I don't remember. Public access.
And then, continue this, 130, the school district philosophy. I assume we're going to update that for our latest five-year plan. It includes our mission statement, for instance.
Yeah, I did have that question. I couldn't remember if that is our...
I actually, conveniently, our mission statement is right here.
It's right here. Yeah, so yeah, we need to update that one.
Thank you for noticing that too. Thank you. Kathy will make note of that.
I remember looking at that, and then I was like, I feel so bad that I can't tell right off the bat if that's it.
Well, conveniently, Linda, I have the printed version, which the next discussion that you guys are leading includes our mission statement.
Right.
I like her new one better. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Joel, you've earned your first now and later.
What if I have a cup of cookies?
Oh, I didn't read.
Were you a cookie? Wow, wow.
Is that your cereal or cookies?
Cereal. You have sweet cookie crisps.
I ate that in the middle as well. That has to be...
Now you've publicly outed me.
Sorry.
Like an endorsement deal out of this now, you know. All right.
The 130, which Joel pointed out, is this, this is not a press issued policy. It looks like it's just something, it's just our stuff? So we just basically make a copy and paste on the new stuff?
Right, just put the text differently.
That would be my assumption.
It is press policy, but you customize it.
It is press policy. But you, okay.
We customize it.
So we just need to cut and paste on the new stuff?
See, this five-year review is important.
Yes, very much so.
Good that I got that during that. Anything else under the one, meaning five-year review? The equal eyes are catching.
That's you, Joel, we're asking you.
I did not see any others.
The only other one, just again, in having these conversations with Martha and just taking a closer look at policies, even if they weren't part of this press update, we came across Policy 2150 about committees, which is interesting because it's actually kind of contrary to what we just said about making things evergreen. So the current policy, as it stands, 2150, lists the standing board committees, but only identifies education, finance, and policy committees. And so I guess if we revise it, we would want to include the new standing board committees of personnel and facilities that have been created. So this one might necessitate the listing out and then the description. So with the revised policy, the education, finance policy would stay the same, the description of them stayed the same, and then it's the addition of personnel with the description as well as facilities.
Well, facility committee is mentioned here. Are you wanting to...
Those are added, I believe.
Oh, so that's the added one. I just want to make sure.
Yes.
That's the asterisk. I want to make sure that's why.
The current one just says three. So the revised one would include the two additional ones.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, there's personnel and facilities. And behavior intervention is there.
That stands under superintendent committee.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Actually, and as I thought about this one too, and me and Tucker about this and Joel, your thoughts. So we have facilities committee, which is facilities chair meeting with the full board, which is what tonight is. We also have facilities advisory committee, which is kind of almost, I think of it almost as a subcommittee of the facilities committee, just gives us a little more flexibility. It's not subject to open meetings, not that, you know, secret things are happening. You know, it's just been a different, like, especially when we were in the midst of our long-range planning, there was a lot, we were finding the principles, and we were having just a lot of planning meetings.
Yeah, it was much more collaborative with the administration and staff and...
And asking to get back to kind of a normal level of facility projects. It becomes more like the rest of the committees were still meeting and checking, you know, regularly. So to me, it feels the same. It just had a lot more work.
Yeah. My question, I mean, do you want to add facility advisory committee under superintendent committee? Or are we comfortable just adding facilities under board committees? And then knowing that there's kind of a facilities advisory committee that may operate from time to time depending on the work...
I feel like you have so many different committees under you that I just feel like that needs to be specified.
I'd probably leave it the way it is.
Well, that's something that comes into and out of existence as needed. It's probably better not listed here.
Martha, I think you're...
We need to add some kind of flexibility, save enough.
Like the pandemic committee that you don't meet the same way now.
The evergreen portion of this is the very bottom line, which says that nothing in this policy limits the authority to designate or to create and use. So you can use committees for your...
Cherry was mentioning, we haven't prepared this committee when we got to the pandemic.
And that's, right, that's a revisit maybe later, but we don't need it.
David and Cherry served on that. So again, a superintendent's committee would be no more than two board members just because of Open Meetings Act requirements related to all of that. And then also, there's some committees where there may not just even be a board member. And those are, I don't know if you'd call those superintendent committees, but like, as we talk about our strategic plan action teams, you're going to hear more about that tonight. There are some where their board members may want to be part of it. Again, this work will be reported regularly.
I think just listing out the ones that report out at board meetings are completely appropriate. We're just updating the list. Yeah. And over the next two years, as we kind of come to even deal with facilities, it might even make sense for two years that facility and finance be one thing. Because if you read the finance description, it's talking about, you know, the property.
Maintenance of the property, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying we should do this now. I'm saying if we get to that point and we feel like that's, you know, we could do that. And then we'll get to update it again.
Go ahead, David.
Linda, I think that's something we might want to consider as well. I think that's a good idea. We should at least consider that or think about that going forward, possibly in a couple of years.
Yeah, I think we should monitor it these two years and then...
Yeah, I think we should monitor it these two years, and then see, you know, when you seat your next board, you can decide.
I know, if there was a large life park project, I might change, but we'll see, you know.
Is this breaking news?
Eight's a good.
Okay.
Exactly.
If you don't mind, I'm going to backtrack on the 130, school district philosophy, thank you, you've gotten us thinking about this one. I actually think those bullet points come off of old, either boilerplate and press, or our old vision and values, so I'd like to suggest that we edit really all of it, it's not just our new mission statement, but as, you know, we also made new identifying new values, that really reflect that.
It was the mission statement that caught my eye, but the others, I wasn't quite sure where their original origin was, but I mean.
That is a more fully revised, but I think, I think those bullet points get revised, too.
Yeah, those are pretty old, I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think, like, this whole front page actually needs to be.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
And all of that deleted, all of this added.
And then, just to clarify on Policy 1:20 about the IGAs, do you want to list all of them, or do you want to leave them all off, which I think you said that would be even removing Ladsy, speaking about.
Maybe they could just say where they're found.
Somewhere.
I guess, does it serve any purpose, or is there anything, you know, special about listing the agreements there?
Somewhere you should have a document, though, that lets people know where, what the IGAs are, so they're not just.
This might be a good place.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, and then I'm sure there could be, you know, these, they'd be modified by the boards from time to time, I mean, all intergovernmental agreements come through the board, or if they were to be discontinued, modified, changed, or a new one were to come about, so.
I mean, if you go back to it, the board governs based on policy, so, you know.
I mean, this is all digital, right, so like, could we just put a link to wherever that live document is housed?
And looking at Kathy.
Because, like, I'm just saying, the constant movement.
Tickets updated.
You don't have to remember all the time.
Right, still may get evergreen, but.
And I was saying the same thing for the committees, too, if you just had a list of committee titles, or header, you know, whatever, and we could, like, link out to that as well, superintendent committees, you have two parts in there, it says, include but not limited to, and then on the bottom, Joel's point of, you know, this doesn't.
Do you want to list them all?
Yeah, so if we just had, like, since it's digital, if we could have a link where
I wonder.
That master document.
I know we live in a very technological age, but I wonder if there's something about making sure everything's listed in case somebody, like, like somebody.
Prints it out.
Really, like, Joel prints things, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I would just, I would check it, if somebody with press to say, like, is that a?
Should I share my?
Well, if somebody wanted it, you know, Kathy email, they could go down to the district office and get a print copy, I mean, I think those other means are still there.
No, I, I agree, I just think we should probably check the press to make sure that's, like.
What's, what's.
Not that they're okay with it, but that's, like, common practice?
Well, I assume these are all being reviewed by Shelley, am I right?
No, they're not, they're not. So press has, the service we pay for with press actually provides a legal review in a more global way, and then, every now and then, we've looked at policies that'll say, we recommend that you would talk to your own district.
And then they go to Shelley.
Some that get more customized, but we really accept, in most cases, not all, that press has had sort of a thorough legal review as an agency.
Well, I guess, at this point, since we're talking about making changes, is that, then, does that make it worthwhile of a call to the board attorney?
If you'd like me to, that we could do that, I think, like, for the school district philosophy, probably not, I mean, that's pretty.
I don't think so. I don't think that merits a call to the lawyer, I think that's something that's normal practice.
And I would just say, because, I, we don't link in our current press packet, or our current board policy book, but just make sure that that's consistent. You know, like, I'm all for doing that, I just want to make sure, because as the policies, the board packets, or board policy packets I've looked through, I don't, it doesn't seem like a common thing, I don't know.
Well, it seems like an easy call to check in with them and say, is this acceptable practice, you know?
I mean, honestly.
I think the decision to list or not has to do with how often we change or enter into.
That's where I was going to go, and I think it wouldn't be that hard for us to update this policy every time we have a new IGA.
I agree.
We have them, what, once a year?
We just reviewed.
I mean, because there's so many villages.
Well, I, but that goes to the point of.
So we got, somebody's got to remember to do.
Most of those live until they are discontinued for one reason.
Exactly.
So I think, it, it seems appropriate if the board is comfortable to put them into the policy by list.
That's fine.
I think what you're saying is it keeps the board, as, because the board may transition and change over time.
That's fine.
When you review this policy, so like, do we still have that agreement? It probably makes sense.
Yeah, and those are the ones that, I know, we just reviewed at our last meeting, so it's just a matter of listing them out, even the one that had the amendment because of COVID on the Riverside one that alone, for like, the remote, it was still all within the same, and you're welcome, no agreement, so even that would have necessitated a change.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think it's, if they're listed, they're fine, because we don't change them with frequency.
Yep, I agree.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, then, next is the education committee.
We will just be passing that over.
Yeah, you know, there's the document, it's basically updated strategic plan with more details, kind of talking about the little nitty-gritty parts of strategic plan that weren't talked about before, so I don't know.
So I thought we invite Angela and Pam to maybe have a seat with us, and we're going to talk just about, to make sure, you know, one of our goals is to make sure that we're regularly sharing with the Board of Education, the changes, and so for us, the, sort of the big piece of implementation was our Institute Day rollout of strategic plan, and then just work that we're already engaging in here as we start the year, so I thought what I do is just do a quick kind of overview, and feel free to ask questions along the way, and I know several of you were at Institute Day and heard some of this firsthand, but we, we want to share the rollout, talk to you about where we've actually assigned people into goals and strategy areas, and then thinking about timelines, and just again, the feedback from the board overall, so interesting that we just talked about, in advance, that we just redid our mission and motto, as you all know, and then our values, who you all have in front of you when we, it's now called placemat, I guess, so we know that we want to make the strategic plan as visible as possible for everybody who has a part in implementing it and bringing it to life, and that's everybody in our district. So, so this is what, this is what everyone received at Institute Day along with a pack of Now and Laters, as you all have a pack of Now and Laters, as a reminder that there's work that we need to do now, and there's work that we need to do later, because I can tell you, Pam, Angela, and Jim, and Don, all sitting in this room, we are all sort of eagerly wanting to jump in and get going right away, and also needing to remind ourselves that this is a five-year plan, and we can't do everything, you know, right away, so, but in terms of some important process steps to date, we did identify our gold champions, and now Wesley and I met just the other day, and he suggested perhaps we create a document then that has the gold champions outlined, so using the same document that you have in front of you, we'll go ahead and do that, and of course, the first gold champion for student achievement is Angela, the one under learning environment, the gold champion for that is Pam Shaw, high-quality workforce is Don DePano, and then family and community partnerships, I'll be the gold champion for that, and Jim Fitton for stewardship of resources. And again, we had introduced that big idea to all of you prior to this meeting, but we've also had a chance to kind of dig in more and identify our action team leaders. Our next step around that will be to look at actually action team members, so we put out really kind of an all call to all staff, and asked them to share with us if they were interested in being on any of these action teams, and we've gotten good feedback from staff, we're continuing to remind, and we may go twist some arms as well, but our next step will be to start to put those committees together, and then think about, sort of the purpose and the charges to those specific committees, the frequency in which they'll meet, and really the work that they're going to dig into and get done, so, as you also know, just last meeting, you all approved their ongoing contract for living the plan with the Consortium for Educational Change as well, and they were great coming in and helping us this summer, thinking about how we roll out this plan and make this plan come alive for our staff, and I think that was really great advice for our team as we headed into Institute Day, and they'll be kind of a, keeping us on track, so we just, this week headed to our meeting with CEC where they met with our gold champions, and it was really a check-in, you know, what are you doing so far, what do you need help with, where are we headed, so, excited about that, too, in terms of the, just to give you an overview of what we did at Institute Day, I touched on this, is our big goal is that everyone would be familiar with the plan, and have not tried to dig in, we know that strategic plans that live on the shelf aren't really plans, and they don't really become what bring improvements to the district, so that was our big idea, we were careful to, we think we were careful not to overwhelm our staff, we kind of said, you know, this is, these are big ideas, these big ideas all really emerged through a committee, really important committee work, as you all know, 36 people on Zoom together last fall, not last fall, last winter, spring, Dan and Wesley were part of that, I know they don't forget that, so, you know, our goal is to really think about timing and investigation and the action work that would come, also reminding everybody that this work really all interrelates, so you'll see there's a series of arrows that go around on that back side or front side, depending on how you look at the placemat, but the goals and strategies side, on making sure people know that this work is also all very interconnected, and that's one of our challenges, is to make sure that we're balancing many different committees, many different leaders, with our overall capacity of the district, so, our Institute Day, I know Wesley was there, and I think some of you that were there for the intro in the morning saw a little bit of it, but we, we did sort of exactly what we did with the board a couple weeks ago, and we had a gold champions, introduce the big goal area along with the people that have been identified as action team leaders, to give kind of an overview of sort of why those goals are there, and why they're important, and then we did a quiz game, and actually Todd Gierman and Kizmir Gorman, two of our principals, did a great online coo, those who probably, if your children probably played coo sometimes, you know, with kind of learning games and activities, and it was really great, there was a ton of energy in the room, and teachers really got kind of excited, and they had to dig through the plan, and can you identify our mission and our vision, and what are some values, and what are not some of our values, and what are some of the goals, and so it was fun, but I was also, you could tell people were really studying the plan and thinking about it, and then we did, you know, a little more serious work, and asked people important reflection questions, you know, what felt most urgent in the plan, what are pieces of the plan that they feel are already doing, or starting doing but needing to approve on, and then that really took us till lunchtime at Institute Day, and then in the afternoon, building teams went back to their buildings with their principals and did some similar work, you know, identifying kind of work already in progress, work that they need to learn more about, more needs to be done, so it was, I think, a really good day, we got great feedback from our staff about the day overall.
I was going to ask you, like, have you received feedback about the plan in general, now that it's been rolled out? Were people not there yet?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we got feedback about Institute Day, which is so much about the plan and about goals, and Angela, and sort of maybe that's your perfect segue to Goal One, and just kind of a brief update on the work that's already happening under Goal Area One, but Angela's also kicked off a professional planning team, which is a new committee specifically to look at PD, which falls under a personnel goal, but as we said, they're all interrelated, because the PLPT is carefully planning the work around student boarding, so with that, Angela, why don't, I'll turn over to you.
Okay, so we did get feedback from the staff on Institute Day, focused on that day, learning about the strategic plan and the work that New Eklund had done as well, we haven't sent anything out about the strategic plan specifically, but what we've heard is that people are receptive to it, positive about it, I think excited about it, but like I said, we don't have that fully, it hasn't been stated to us as such. When looking at Goal One, just updating you on some of the things that we've done with Goal One, the standards-based monitoring strategy is going to be led by Kim Hefner, who's principal at Hollywood Elementary School, and Katie Kayasta, who is a staff member at Hauser Junior High, they are, we've talked about how that strategy would work, realizing this is a five-year plan, and the work is to be done over the course of five years, and we don't want to overwhelm everybody by trying to do all strategies at once, we're going to actually start slow with the standards-based monitoring strategy, and look at this year as a year of research, and looking at the research that, there was a committee, a standards-based reporting committee a few years ago, we're going to go back to that work, and look at the work that was done previously, we're going to look at what other schools have done, their, things that have worked well for them, pitfalls they've had, so that we can try to avoid those, and really just spend this time digging into what's out there already. With full-day kindergarten, Kizmir Gorman, the principal of Life Park, will go with that with me, and we have started to plan how that will work out, so we are looking at forming an action team within the next few weeks, and beginning to meet as an action team. We've talked about the beginning meetings being about discussing our role as an action team, we want to make sure everyone on the team understands what we're here for, we're an investigative body, and what that means, and what that would look like, we talked about the beginning meetings being about looking at our team's purpose, and then exploring research on full-day kindergarten as well as other kindergarten options, so that we're able to see the full picture of what kindergarten can look like, and the benefits of all those different types of options that might be out there. And then, while not a district strategy under strategic plan, I did want to just touch on summer school from this year, because that is one of the ways that we work to foster student growth and achievement, and usually at this Cal meeting, I would update you on different summer happenings, so I wanted to make sure that we did that, but this is related to the strategic plan in terms of student growth. We had 99 students participate in our skill-building program, we had 160 students participate in our enrichment program, and in keeping in line with our strategic plan thinking, you know that one of our strategies for Goal One is looking at opportunity and equity gaps, and so looking at summer school, Ms. Hefner, who oversees the summer school program, and I looked at the participants of summer school to see, are we truly, is the population of summer school reflective of our school, our district population? And it was pretty close, we had 58% of our students that attended summer school were white, which is about what we have as a district population, which is 61%. Hispanic population was next in attendance at summer school, 32% of our population of summer school were Hispanic, and 31% is our district average. With our black population, we had about 2% in attendance, and 3% is our district average, so close. Our Asian population is less than 1%, and our district average is 2.5%. And then our multiracial percentage of participants in summer school were 6.5%, with our district average actually being 2.3%. So it was nice to see that our summer school program, for the most part, everybody is getting that full opportunity to be a part of the program. We also looked at our free and reduced representation in summer school, and that was also pretty much on par with our district average, with 27% being represented in the summer school population, 21% being our district average. So that was nice data to see as some baseline data as we begin looking and exploring our opportunity and equity gaps. Do you have any, any questions throughout?
I have, if you don't mind, I have a question, going back to the full-day kindergarten conversation, I know with the standards-based recording, you were saying this year's a research year, you know, do we feel like we have a timeline, are we figuring out a timeline where full-day kindergarten will be, you know, either researched and recommended or not recommended, I'm just trying to.
Absolutely, yes, so, when we met with Arla from CEC, we did talk about looking at that macro level of developing a fight, like, where all the strategies fit in the five-year plan, from our point of view right now, obviously that could change and get adjusted as time goes on, and when we talk about full-day kindergarten, Ms. Gorman and I have talked about, we want to start by the end of September, beginning of October, with our group, so that we can do the work between now and the beginning of February and of January, so that depending on what comes of that, if we decide to move forward to full-day kindergarten, as the board, if the board decides to move forward to full-day kindergarten, that we have the time then to look at staffing if needed, to address facilities, finance, all of those pieces with ample time before the end of the year.
So that is a conversation we're hoping to be able to have this year?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And we're even, like, wondering, just even, you know, we've been thinking about this and talking about this, you know, it might be helpful, because this is a committee that we're going to put on kind of a shorter timeframe, as Angela just described, but even monthly bringing, sort of where the committee is at, so that you have had regular discussion points along the way, I think might be really helpful, I think the other piece, too, that Angela has shared about the full-day kindergarten, is looking at the research itself, and also looking at our own unique student data, really digging into that, so those are probably two very specific things that the committee would be doing, candidate of teacher.
I have a question about facilities, because would the spacing constraints affect all-day kindergarten for COVID restrictions, or are we not limited in that area?
For COVID, because of COVID?
Yeah, because of spacing, like, are we able to hold the same capacity, you know, if for some, I hope to God not, but if for some reason, that's why.
I thought this was a good word. I thought this was a word.
I'm just saying, if that were the case, I mean, do we have a contingency plan?
I'll just say, an interesting observation for me is, has been to see our schools and it's great to see them full.
Yeah.
And also to see kind of where we might have some smaller group programming in larger spaces because of COVID or because the room is available to us and there's some combination of that different at different schools. And I think that's also going to really help us start to visualize where that kindergarten space could come from. So we know, and we did all this facilities work, that one of our goals was to build space, you know, enough to accommodate full-day kindergarten. I think I just read in the landmark today that Riverside, this area, North Riverside is one of the growing communities, I think with the census data. So who knows? We have to keep looking at our enrollment, but you know, we really did the same addition to have that extra room for full-day kindergarten. We know that full-day kindergarten in Hollywood, you know, because it's a one-section school, we would have that space. We know that Life, we're kind of talking about, starting to already feel maybe a little bit crunched to be a true two-section school, what would be needed? If districts, again, if we were to do full-day kindergarten, districts do have to offer at least half-day to families that might still want that and prefer that, maybe Life would be the place that would maintain the half-day. So again, there's a number of different ways we can look at this.
Would there be two different avenues? Do you have, do you have a consideration for whether or not there are restrictions?
Yeah, we want to, we want to take another close look at all of our facilities, but we know and Jim knows and, you know, one of these we talked about with the full-day kindergarten committee is that their work's going to probably be very focused on the educational aspect, research, student data, and that then, again, talking about the inner relationship of all these goals, finance and facilities would kind of enter in and we would make sure that we have those updates too because we know that the additional costs that it would bring and then just the impact on the facilities.
Yeah, no, I would just, I know there's so many pieces. I'm sure you, I just wanted to make sure and I hope to God that is the case, but...
I think it's a great idea to, as a board, now we know this conversation will be happening all year, should be revisiting it at these meetings so that when it comes March, April, and there's a recommendation or not, it doesn't feel like, oh my gosh, I don't know, like, you know, like to be, you know, filled in along the way if there's articles that are great to share with the board or, you know, anything so that we all feel, along with the, you know, the expertise of the committee, sharing information with us so that we know that we're, we just know that that's coming our way.
No, and besides the staffing, I mean, yeah, we start hiring in January and February for most of our positions and then also families need to plan and so they're going to need people to transport or not and it's really important that, you know, I like that you're ahead of that.
You might recall that this was a board conversation is that there was conversation from the strategic plan team, Dan and Wesley, I recall this the best, that they didn't even want us to write the strategy as explore full-day kindergarten. There was some talk of do full-day kindergarten. It's like, no, there's more work, there are some additional investigations, educationally, finance, facilities, really all of these areas that are, you know, directly, you know, impacting directly on the shoulders of the Board of Education. So that's what we want to do is make sure we're writing that regular update, regular conversations along the way. But we are, as Angela said, looking for kind of that one-year timeline for, you know, moving toward a decision from the board because if we're going to implement, we'd like to implement sooner the five-year plan than later the five-year plan. And then those other goals that would continue on would be, you know, again, depending on the decision, if we don't move forward, you know, sort of evaluating the impact of that. If we do move forward, evaluating the impact of that, so.
One other thing, within the timeline you have, will there be a point where there's community, like we ask for community feedback? Because I mean, it's not helpful to have it before you need it, you know what I mean? Like in the process, I'm sure there's a point where that's necessary. I just want to make sure we build that in because I think this is a topic that's very, you know, it's going to be very, our community's going to be very interested in it and I want to make sure they feel that they have the opportunity to share it, you know, share their information when it's needed.
Absolutely, yes. So we've talked about with action teams, you keep the action teams a little bit smaller, ten to twelve people, but you invite guests to different meetings and so there would be a meeting that, you know, community members would either be invited to or we would figure out how that community, if it's a survey or what, that meeting would be focused on looking at that community feedback.
Right. I think from a board perspective, I want to know, you know, it's a big decision that we're going to be possibly facing, so I want to make sure, you know, where the pulse of the community is, so.
Absolutely.
Angela, could you clarify the perceptual data that's listed in the bottom of the, just kind of elaborate on what you guys mean by that?
Well, and so on the side, you may or may not remember that those are the, those are possible key performance indicators and so they're not set in stone to be the way we measure the three strategies we have, but the perceptual data is looking, that's in term, terms of the baseline data we have with five essentials. So some type of satisfaction or community stakeholder survey type thing is what they mean by perceptual data.
Yeah, that's what I, I kind of figured that, but I wanted to make sure it's less of a concrete, you know, yes, I have five of these, but if you have a survey, you might get everybody, but you might not, and so.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering, I think I heard that the standards, when we're talking about standards-based monitoring and reporting, that that's something that's going to be collected, identified and configured over the next, I don't know, I guess, year or so. I'm wondering, could you give us an example of a hypothetical or, you know, how different or varied those standards might be in terms of, you know, are we looking for numerical values or, you know, what is it we're looking for, I guess, just in a hypothetical sense?
Yes, definitely. So the standards-based monitoring and reporting process will be at least a two-year, possibly three, four-year strategy. The first year being, like I mentioned, a lot of research. And then the second year, looking at the development of it, professional learning for it, because we want to make sure all staff members are aware of how it would work out. And then also educating communities of families as well so that they understand what that would look like. So when looking at standards-based monitoring, we'd be looking at state standards, the common core state standards to show how students are meeting or exceeding or approaching or not yet meeting those standards, which is similar to our elementary report card now where we have the one, two, three, four that talks about exceeding, meeting, approaching or not meeting. But instead of the key criteria that's on report cards now, with the standards-based monitoring system, we would be evaluating where we're at with those specific common core state standards for the different subject areas. Does that answer the question you were asking me?
I guess, yes, so it sounds like there are some similar parallels to what we see now. So I guess it just sounds like you're going a little bit more in-depth or trying to...
Be more specific about what we're reporting on the progress of students. So we're teaching to the standards. When we look at curriculum alignment, we look for our curricular resources to align to the standards, but then when we report out currently on our report cards, we're reporting on just random criteria that might fit math, science, social studies or English language arts. This way, it's more focused on if your child is learning fact fluency up to ten, and so if that's what we're teaching in class and that's what we're assessing in class, we want to let you know if your child is exceeding that standard, meeting that standard, not yet there or approaching it.
Okay.
Right, I guess it just depends on how many, are you going to try to accomplish? Like is it, you know, fractions and then also math fluency in this area and...
As far as what standards we would assess?
Yeah, I mean, it's a question of, you know, how long do you make it?
Right, that would be part of the work of the committee.
Yeah, I think that's the interesting question is how long do you make it and so we don't overwhelm the families.
Absolutely.
But it's useful enough for the teachers.
Can you give examples of stuff in the touch of the report cards?
Yes.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I could see people being really irritated.
Because there are districts that have overwhelmed families and families just, you stop looking at what's happening because it's just too much on the page. So that's some of those pitfalls that we would be talking to other districts about.
Right, but I got an A in math, you know, what does that mean? I think is also a good comment because you really don't know what topics they didn't know and that's the kind of thing where you take, kid takes A's, I'm thinking about my junior, you know, it really is important to know, oh, I didn't know this part of algebra, but I knew the geometry, so I think it's interesting.
Who's making the day calls? There's feedback, yeah, there's a lot of feedback.
Just wondering if he was starting to woodworking process.
David, is that you?
David? We're getting feedback, is that, I don't...
Yeah, I know, I like, I appreciate what you're hearing, I guess I'm, the whole standards base, I see over on the, like, the right-hand side, it says growth and proficiency in reading in math, including math and IAR. I guess, I mean, I'm not saying we don't teach those standards, I'm not saying that at all, but I guess I'm just getting, I'm just concerned because I know there's so much testing going on and I just don't want to make, I want to, I'd like sort of a little bit more clarity around what we're looking at in sort of in regards to these standardized tests because, I mean, I do think we, personally, I think we spent a lot of time with these standardized tests and I just don't want that to be, I'm just concerned that when we put that in our strategic plan and for saying, okay, we're going to be looking at these standardized tests, that that's going to become our focus and I, that causes me a little concern. I just sort of like what people's thoughts are.
I don't think that's necessarily meant to be there for the focus, but there's, you know, the only way to actually like assess some of these goals are to look at all the data that's relevant. So that whole side are things that we're going to be looking at to assess if we're meeting our goals.
Yeah. I would like to reiterate, none of this stuff has been, these are just fill-in point data. We have not discussed it. This is stuff that needs the board to figure out what goes here, so.
Yeah, and especially...
No, I understand that, I just, I know we've had discussions before at the board level, talking about standardized tests and the amount of tests that we're giving. I just, I just want to basically make sure that that's not something we're going to be focusing on, putting our major focus on, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I think that's one place that the report card could be helpful though because, you know, those classroom assessments that the teachers give can give the window into things that may or may not be on the standardized test but are still useful to know and so you've covered a lot of areas at once and maybe both. But, I mean, to ignore the standardized test, I think is also a mistake. I think you have to have some kind of benchmark, but I'm not saying you need to do it ten times a year, but certainly a useful tool.
Well, I mean, I don't think we're talking about any more or less testing.
No.
You know, one of the things you hear about districts that have made, perhaps made the transition to standards-based grading, it's kind of like what you said, Jerry, you know, a child used to say, I got an A in math, and a child, you know, with standards-based grading can often say like, I'm really good at, and then can almost name skills that relate to the standards and, or can say, or you hear the opposite, like, I got a D in that, I don't know why I got a D.
Yeah.
Oh, it's because I don't understand, you know, it's not, but anyway, that's, this whole idea of also making a child sort of conversant with what's happening in their own learning.
Well, it's, or I did all the homework, I don't understand why I got this grade on the assessment. Well, then there's a disconnect and so it's a way for the teacher to say, you know, am I actually teaching in the class while I'm assessing? And so I think it's a good conversation for everybody and how detailed they go, that's what they're going to look at, so.
But I'll just interject a process step that, as Wesley said, that right-hand column, those are what were identified really by CEC as key performance indicators because they were likely things that we were already doing. So that whole KPI and the targets, I think that's a whole nother board discussion as we kind of, you know, sort of dig in, I feel like this is kind of first layer, like, hey, these are the big goals, this is how we're organizing, getting the work done around the specific strategies. But then I do look forward to more conversation and again, not to make, you know, light of it tonight either, I don't want to cut that conversation short, it's really valuable, but I think we do need to sort of dig in just on that kind of right-hand side of the, of the slides.
And you will be doing that with CEC and then bringing it to us, right?
Yeah, and with all of you. I mean, you know, exactly kind of what David's just saying is, you know, I know there's IAR, math, and those are important tools that the board uses to look at overall student achievement, but what else is there, what more could there be? Or I don't want more of just test scores, you know, so I think, again, that board feedback will be an important part of it too.
Yeah, I was just thinking about this the last couple of days, we're doing one, two, three tonight in this capacity, like what is it, where are we at, what are we doing? And then four, five in, I guess, October, right, September, October. So probably November before we circle, or like when we come back to this, maybe we focus on like, you had a little bit of time, two months or whatever, think a little bit more about it, we could maybe have a little bit of a dialogue of how we're thinking about that, objective or measure or whatever, and then kind of move, sort of move through that throughout the year might be a good way to go about it. Because right now, it sort of feels like we don't have formal goals. Like we have goals, but they're not set yet and we should probably have them before the end of the year or at least before, like, end of calendar year, but probably at least before the end of school year.
And that's like CEC has said, it takes you a while to figure out your real key performance indicators and it takes the committees time to be together to sort of identify their purpose, their charge, their direction and then say, a way I know that I'm getting this down or meeting this goal is, we should look more closely at this or that, so.
And then over the five, and over the five years, those things might even, you know, evolve.
Yeah.
The first time we're like, ah, I don't know, you know, that didn't paint the full picture, what else?
I think every year it evolves because this year, this team is going to be focused on these three things and so we need measures on those three things, but then next year, you know, after this year, you'll probably have ideas of what you want to do next year and then, okay, this is what Angela wants to do next year, okay, here's what we want to measure with it. Yeah, so it's, which will force us as a board to get better at what exactly are we measuring ourselves on every year or so.
Well, and the difficult thing is even though standardized test formats have changed, the lengths have changed, depending on what year it was, I know you remember Angela, it might be five days, it might be three days, and so every two years you have a discussion about what does that mean for us and our kids and why are we sitting for six hours a day and what are we doing with that data? So I think that's another difficult position that is not always under our control, but we have to figure out how much we want to put weight on it, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks. I think you're getting a lot of attention on the committee.
Yeah.
I think I have a feeling, I just have a feeling.
Uh, yeah, thanks. You know, it's a very important topic.
It is, yeah.
I think it's fantastic that we're going to get a lot of community involvement, that's what we're...
Yeah, it's kind of like other than the early learners, how you engage with members of the community that, whose children are not yet under the district's purview, so they'll have kind of, or this topic is important to them, but they might not know these conversations are going on at the district level or at the board level because they're not already within the district. So obviously families that still have children going through, or even families with kindergarteners behind you, but I still as a community member have an opinion on it, so I'm sure you'll still see engagement from those for which they will not have children going through kinder but have an opinion.
Oh, that's true, for sure, yeah.
And those who still are in the district and have children, but how do you engage with those that are, have not, have been in the district but will have kindergarteners coming up soon?
So I think it's partly reaching out to the programs, the preschool, daycare programs that are in the area around, talking with our current families about what programs they've utilized so that we are trying to find where our families are coming from. And then utilizing the communication tools that we have, social media, the landmark and so forth to put out in all call, whether it's for a survey or coming as a guest member to come do a focus group or give feedback.
Yeah, we did that even with the prior plan. It was kind of neat to send out a community feed blast and you would get people that didn't even have children but had an opinion and so it's, you know, I think it's a good idea.
Given the number of families who will sign up for full-day kindergarten at St. Mary's only to transfer into D ninety-six in first grade, I mean, I don't know if that's something that they would be, that St. Mary's would welcome, having us interact with them, but that is, that is an audience, I guess, if not the...
It is.
Well, and to, something I think we just said is, it's not only the people who, we shouldn't be focusing on simply anyone with an agenda on it, but the whole community.
Well, yeah, any taxpayer has their right to say what they want to say and we want to make sure we reach them all.
It costs money, doesn't it?
It does cost money.
This isn't, this isn't only the person with the loudest voice and to the point of the committee is, it's based on what is good for the students and the district as a whole and not specific groups. So I think your focus on the research and what have other people learned already about this, it's not a vote is what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
Right.
But I think even, like, you know, you mentioned community survey or community outreach, community engagement, really important, but I think you've all presented sort of interesting parts to that, you know, questions that surveying families with young children yet to enter kindergarten, is that surveying the whole community that may have an opinion as a ex-mayor, you know, community member, who either did or did not have that opportunity for their own children or don't even have children in the district necessarily. So that's something, again, where I think the committee could have some discussion, but also would love more board discussion on that because to ask the community, sort of, do you want full-day kindergarten, may not be exactly the question we want to ask, or it is, right? I mean, so...
Well, yeah, with the caveats that we tell them, this is what it costs, this is what it means for the buildings and you give them enough information that they can at least make it reasonable.
I think it's a lot more listening.
Yeah.
So maybe it's an survey, it could be even like we've done sometimes informational nights where you...
I think informational nights are great.
We were looking at Hollywood School, or, you know, I mean, inviting community in for in-person focus groups. So, again, this is really helpful feedback, I think, as we think about process steps with the committee, and kind of the, how we kind of extract, like, from the committee the additional pieces needed, so thank you.
Okay.
Ready for?
Yeah, I think you can move forward.
Learning environment and culture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so in looking at goal number two of learning environment and culture, there are three goal strategies under that area. The first one is social-emotional learning integration with core instruction. And the action team leaders for that strategy are Jeff Wiedra, April May, and Todd Gierman. And the second goal strategy is student-centered learning, and the action team leaders for that strategy are Sarah Hickey and Kazimir Guarmen. And then the third goal strategy is culturally responsive approach to learning. And our action team leaders are Juriducci, Alex Govea Lopez, and Pete Gatz. So in looking at these three strategies, the action team leaders for the SCL strategy and culturally a responsive approach to learning, they actually met last week on August 26. And those two groups came together to do some foundational work of digging into what has been completed so far, due to the fact that social-emotional learning and culturally responsive instruction or teaching, those were the two areas that were outlined by the PLPT to be focused for professional development this year.
Okay.
So they met, and they looked at some of the work that we completed this summer with Arlana from CEC, with the poster walks that we did, looking at each strategy, looking at where we want to be at the end, what's going on now, and what needs to happen in the middle. And then they, they took the information that we created in our groups from what we called the Chapter One, the very first things that we would need to look at. They looked at what was outlined in those posters, and then they also looked at the data that on Institute Day, as was just mentioned before, the staff went back to their buildings and with their principals, they looked at all the strategies, and they went through those strategies, and they did a walk where they went through those, listed things that they felt they were doing, how they are doing those things. And so they took the data from the posters at those buildings, and they reviewed that information, and started to make some foundational understanding of where people were at, were at in the buildings on those areas. Because the one thing they noted was, they would like to really start with that philosophical approach, so that it's consistent across the district. The one thing we know is there's lots of work being done in the areas, but it's the consistency piece and the general philosophical understanding. So that's where they started. And I have not met yet with the student-centered learning strategy team, but plan to do that in the near future. All three of these groups have received the information or photos of the posters, so they can start to put that data together and organize it as they want, from what the different buildings thought. And then we've given, I've given them the names of the people who were interested in their, to be on their action team, but we have to work all that out, as some people are interested in more than one team, so we'll need to review that in the future, at least so they know who's interested.
Can I ask another question about the, on the right side, the student engagement? Will the committee be looking at how we measure, what kind of measurement tools were you using for engagement, or are those known now?
Yeah, they actually do know how to come up with that. So, again, those were some of the things CEC suggested, but yeah, and they'll, and what will be important is that everyone's using the same tool, and we're measuring it the same.
Yeah, because I was thinking, you know, our buildings do have different populations subtly, and are we going to tailor it to that in general, or because it changes sometimes every year, or is it more of a global strategy?
Probably be more consistent across the board. I mean, I imagine with this goal, too, when we look at social, well, you're talking about student engagement.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, I think you just have everybody do the same tool.
Hopefully, we'll have a psychologist, too, who can even explain how to really look at and observe, and make sure that the data's.
Right, because if it's a classroom teacher, I mean, that could, I could see that being part of professional learning days.
So, right, if you're doing some observational data, you have to make sure that you are identifying exactly what you're looking for when you collect the data.
So that's something the committee, just like the other lists, these are the, you know, we think we're doing this well, but we're going to look more.
Right, right, we're going to have to have some parameters of what we're looking at for observation data.
I like the approach they're taking, that these teams are taking, in terms of, these are a lot of situations or areas where there's already curriculum, things are already being done, so it's great to take this inventory of what's being done.
And that's the thing.
And then kind of going back to the philosophical side of, this is what's being done, and where do we want, you know, like, otherwise, how do you decide, how do you decide what to implement or what not to, like, what to change, what not to change, without knowing where you're at, and a broader picture of what we feel we need to be doing? So I think these are a great foundational.
Right, and is it being done in just one, is one building not doing it, or, you know, it's so, it's important, I think, for the leaders to have that tact.
And I think the good thing is, from what we gather from the initial data, that everybody's doing things, and they're all actively doing them, but the question is, now we need to look at being consistent and really understanding why we're doing these things, we have that. I mean, there is a basic understanding, but let's have a general philosophy that we all stand by.
I just appreciate us not like a jump in and let's try this whole new social-emotional learning program.
No.
Without knowing what's already happening everywhere, and taking some time to think about what we want, you know, and the bigger picture.
And that's, that's the thing, too, with social-emotional learning, you know, maybe I was talking to Martha, or I want to remember, it was Marla Angela the other day, too, is that even with social-emotional learning, that's a five-year plan, will we be done with that? No, that's going to be something that we need to continue to go on and revisit every year, and make sure that we're still having, as new staff come in, that they understand the philosophy and our curriculum and everything to keep it.
I know what the planning committee asked, because we all, and our children, have come through many months and almost more, you know, a year and a half of pandemic, that is this an individual approach to start, or is it a global approach to dealing with their, basically, as you said, every child has experienced some degree of trauma in the last year. And I like that the district, that you mentioned at our meeting, is going to be assuming that everyone needs this baseline of care, and then we'll dive in deeper as we see, and interact with the students. So I really liked hearing about that at the planning committee, and kind of excited that we have this acceptance that we are in this place, but we are going to work through where we are and where the students are.
Right.
So, appreciate consideration for that in the SCL approach.
And then also with, with the culturally responsive approach to learning, they looked at information, too, even done some research on outside speakers and organizations that we can connect with to really lay out a plan for that, to, for some work that's previously been done.
Good.
They got their wheels spinning when we met last week.
Good, now I'm excited, that's great.
We can move on to goal three, which means we kind of shift personnel committee, and we actually shifted a few of our people, Angela, you're going to stay, right? And Pam, thank you, and I, I will, I will take a moment and say this right now, Angela, Pam, Don, Jim, everyone's sitting here, they have been so busy getting school open and dealing with kids in need, and staff who need things changed or different, so, and we're still dealing with COVID, as you know, so just a huge thank you to this group to also sort of take the moment to lift our heads out of the sand and think about the long-range goals, too. So, there's just been a lot happening here in these, it's not even been weeks, it's been a week.
No, and I know, thank you, Don, because, you know, no, there's math testing going on, I'm sure Don's been busy with that, so.
Yeah, it's a slightly busy time of year.
Slightly busy time of year.
Well, I have, I am the, a goal champion for goal three, high-quality staff, with the goal being to recruit, develop, and retain exceptional personnel for all positions. There's two strategies underneath this goal, to provide a personalized professional learning environment, that includes mentoring, coaching, and collaboration. And the, the team leaders of that goal, Angela's part of that, Chris Harbalis, as well as Kim Heffner. And Pam referenced the PLPT, that's really the, that is essentially the action team. And there's been three meetings this year, I know that, I know that there's been work that had been done leading up to this. I've been able to attend two of those three meetings, so it's really been, given me an opportunity to start to get, to see that the work's been done. Angela's also working with, I guess you'd say, a consultant from West 40, who's helping with developing that plan, and if you'd like to elaborate more on some of the work that's been done.
I can. So we have currently 16 members on the professional learning planning team, and it's representation of different roles throughout the district, as well as all different grade levels throughout the district, from our early learners through eighth grade. We have, as Don said, we've met three times so far, set overarching goals for professional learning in the district, Pam had referenced that. The team decided that based on different data points, we looked at a professional learning survey that was given at the end of last year, we looked at the Modern Learners' Bright Light Survey that was given at the end of last year, and then we looked at another data point, but I am blanking on that third one right now, to determine what survey, or what professional needs our staff members were saying they had. And so from those three data points, and then looking at the strategic plan as well, we learned that the staff members were really calling for professional learning and social-emotional learning, culturally responsive practices, and student engagement. So focusing professional learning for this year, the majority of professional learning for this year on culturally responsive practices and social-emotional learning, knowing that those two will then lead to better student engagement. We are working on planning long range, but getting up to that speed just takes some time. This is new for our staff, it's a mindset shift of having staff members help plan professional learning. So there's a lot of conversation that has happened and needs to happen, so that we can all feel comfortable and fall on the same page as we continue to move forward. So, also working on how can we personalize learning, so very excited about that. It's one of, it's part of the strategy, the first strategy under goal three, and knew it was something we would work towards, but again, another mindset shift, and I'm happy to say that the team is actually pretty much getting there before I thought we would. So looking at how can we personalize learning about social-emotional learning and culturally responsive practices for ourselves, as well as what the district might provide, too. So a lot of great work that's been done in that area.
Thank you, Angela. And the other strategy, the action team leaders involved in that will be Brad Meyer, Kim Heffner, and April May. And that is really the focus, is really to focus on that recruiting and retaining of staff. The team has not met formally yet, I did speak with Kim about that today, but we'll look to get some, something calendared and bring everyone together. The, one of the foundational pieces of that is just the kind of belief that it's important that students see themselves and what they're learning, who they're learning from, and the people they see around them in the school. And so we'll look at recruiting and hiring practices, look at what opportunities, how we can do to expand the types of candidates that we're able to engage in as positions come open, and just to expand, you know, the diversity of our workforce.
When's the last time we have a document describing our teacher and staff retention and percentages? Do we, I mean, I know we talk about that.
So, I think, one of our gives us some data points on that, and we'll take a look at that, I know that'll, we're not sure what the owner's state report, well, we are sure, but we're not sure, meaning it'll be without any IAR scores, and, you know, well, we'll have IAR scores, but not till spring or something.
Right, I know, we, we don't have what I would consider a huge turnover rate, other than, you know, someone retires, but I think, I'm excited, at least from when, you know, you go to Institute Day, and everyone seems so excited, so if we can keep that kind of energy for our staff and draw people in, I think that's great, but.
And that might even be, you know, state, like, where the committee might want to take a look at that document, but then sort of dig in, like, what, what additional, because the state puts that together for us based on, and it's accurate, but is that the most meaningful data point for us, or?
Yeah, no, is there something else for our specific, because we're, you need small district.
Wesley, you were going to say something?
Well, I was just, the engagement, one of the things that Martha and I talked about yesterday, the two of us just met about this, was Nate Eklund, you know, three of you were there, that was fantastic.
He was fun, he was really fun.
I see a lot of speakers that bring up that type of topic, and he was just super engaged, and everybody was, like, the whole place was just focused on him. I think the content was very good, but he also presented it in a way that kept people's attention to.
Even on only one leg.
And as a non-educator, I feel like I, I feel like I took something from it as a non-educator, so, like, it just, it was a, it was a, it was a great.
Yeah, so just to kind of hit on your excitement piece there, and like, hearing that, you know, everybody's already kind of engaged with it, there was just a real good buzz on Institute Day and everything, and Martha had mentioned that she's continuing to speak with him on how do we maybe continue that going, not be like a done, done thing, so I'm forward to come on that, but he's got some ideas, or he's got some capabilities of like working with staff surveys and like coaching opportunities and things like that, that I think would be of really high value, because I think anytime we talk about a survey, surveys are not easy, right? They're difficult to write, to get, and interpret the data that you're actually trying to get, so having somebody that kind of does this really, I think, would be good to really get the true sense of.
And I, I do love that it comes from a third party as well, just because I think, you know, it just.
Less biased.
It just seems very, like, you know.
Well, I love that it was somebody that sometimes, you know, you do get the research people that write the book, and they, they're in this doctorate program, and that's wonderful, but I, I think it's so wonderful that he was a classroom teacher for so long, but also was on committees and had a diverse experience, so I think it was a way for everybody to connect with him, that he said, I understand you, like, I get in your shoes, and I think that's very valuable, because it'll give him, when he does meet with us later, a peek into, oh, yeah, I was in the musicals, and I understand how to pull that group, and I was in, you know, the classroom for English, or whatever it was. I like that about it.
So, so thanks for that, Park Wesley, because at the September 15 meeting, I anticipate bringing forward a contract where we can do some ongoing work with Nate Eklund and his partner that was there with him, Steve Todd Tanglia, doing a school-wide, a school-wide satisfaction survey, so it's really asking teachers and paraprofessionals their thoughts about kind of their own role individually, but also their role amongst their peers, their role within the organization. And we really think that that's valuable data, but then, as Wesley said, not just doing that survey, but then follow-up, working with building leadership teams to say, like, okay, this is what you've learned about your building, climate, culture, you know, like, how do we want to work together to make improvements here? And then also kind of those checkpoints with the principals who lead those BLTs. So we're looking to get that work structured, and again, I think we felt that, just really positive feedback about having somebody that could kind of align with us and help us keep focused on that area as well.
I think Wesley's absolutely correct about this, survey is being difficult, though, because even those five essentials, when you fill those out, it's, it can be very dry and not meaningful, because the questions are so vague, and you're like, well, I don't know, is it a four, is it a five, I'll choose this. And is everybody, what's the reason that we went with that choice? And if we could maybe tailor it, you could help us with that.
So I would say, you know, in the years that I've been here, all I've really kind of heard is that nobody really sort of puts a whole lot of weight into five essentials.
No, because it's so.
You take, and maybe you take it, maybe you don't, we did not a great return rate on those. We're required to do it by the state, so it's not optional, but having something in addition that's not burdensome and lengthy, but also really helps us dig in on some things that we're wanting to better understand and address within the district. So, kind of fits with that perceptual data that was up there also, but also I think we have staff satisfaction, school-wide satisfaction is one of our potential KPIs here, so, overall staff satisfaction, that's really a potential way to measure that.
Probably one of the most critical ones.
Well, it's really important, because imagine if you're, it's your kid's teacher, do you want them to love where they work?
Yeah.
Of course, they're going to be so much better teacher if they're engaged, I mean, it's just, and any one of you guys, like, do you like where you work? Of course, I'm going to work so much harder, so I think it's really important.
I mean, the vision, I think, of Eklund Consulting is, I forget their tagline, exactly, but it's being part of a network of districts that want to make it a great place for teachers to teach.
Yes.
Therefore, for children to learn, you know, so I think that's really, there's really a lot of powerful things in that.
And, and teaching right now is very difficult, especially now.
Especially.
Yeah, anything we can do to really figure out what's, what's happening, and that's important, I think.
We know the pandemic was, you know, teaching is challenging, and we know that the pandemic meant all the more challenging, and here we are, we're talking about, we're very excited to see kind of school back to in a way that feels normal, normal with masks on, but we still are in a COVID environment, and so, you know, I sort of feel for, for everybody in the organization, kind of the challenge of kind of doing what starts to of kind of doing what starts to feel normal and very exciting. And there's new challenges that come with that, but also knowing that we're not really there yet. We're not out of the woods yet. Want to dig in on mentoring?
I can, yep. So also under Goal Three, High Quality Staff, not a strategy, but again, something our district does that is about recruiting, developing, retaining exceptional personnel. Before mentoring induction, I wanted to talk about just some of our summer professional learning work that we did. So the elementary math team of the Math Air Ventures met and worked on the new scope and sequence for Math in Focus. What we have noticed over the years is that some of our grade levels with Math in Focus teach standards that are above, developmentally above where students should be. So we have gone through and revamped the scope and sequence for all grade levels, less changes at the primary grade levels, a few more changes at the intermediate levels. And so that work was done and shared with the teachers then on the second Institute Day. And we'll continue to revisit that, as well as rework our common assessments that we assess students with, with Math in Focus. A team of Hauser teachers worked on SEL-related activities that teachers are going to be using during Cougar Connections, which is like our advisory class. Every student, every grade level attends Cougar Connections during their lunch, lined up with their lunch period. And so now we have these SEL activities that teachers will be working on with their students as well. And then another group of Hauser teachers, along with Sarah Hickey, our innovative learning specialist, worked on, worked on the structure of, worked on the structure for our What I Need program, our WIN program. And WIN is completed, is administered, it functions during math and ELA. So math and ELA, as you know, is a double block of eighty minutes. We take twenty minutes of that to focus on what students need individually. And so this team of Hauser teachers and Sarah Hickey worked to provide a structure for that so that they're either doing practice activities, doing work with the teacher directly, or doing, participating in games that might reinforce what students are working on, partner work, collaborative work. So setting more of a structure so that it's consistent among all the ELA classes at a grade level, all the math classes at a grade level. So we're excited about that work as well. So those were a few of the summer things that we worked on. And then probably one of the most important things with a high-quality staff is mentoring, induction, and retention. So we started our mentoring and induction the week before school started, with three days of time with our new teachers. We welcomed fourteen new staff members, new certified staff members, to our district team. We spent three days talking about, we learned about the school district. We participated in different activities that would help them establish routines and procedures and relationships in a meaningful way. So really focusing on not just doing an activity to do an activity and say it's fun, but talking about the purpose and point behind that activity. Obviously talked about the regular pieces of the job, like Schoology or CSO, the curricular resources. And then they were able to spend time with their mentors and their building leaders as well. We've also had two long-term subs that joined us during those three days, so they could learn these pieces also. There are two long-term subs that started the year off. So they came and joined us. And then our next steps are just, we'll have continued monthly meetings with our new teachers, the teacher, and the teacher lead for mentoring. We will have trimester meetings with our mentors to ensure we're supporting them as they're mentoring the new teachers. And then the teacher lead for mentoring will also provide some individual coaching for new staff members as well. And so I just wanted to, in past times, our new teachers would join us tonight, and they'd stand up, and I'd introduce them. So instead of them standing up and introducing them, I have individual pictures of each, and I'll just briefly tell you, you can see their faces, and I'll tell you who they are.
Can I ask a quick contact question related to the math, before you go into the teacher list? I know prior, we talked about that fifth to sixth transition to Carnegie work as being a very difficult one. Is there any consideration when they were doing the Math in Focus? Are they also focusing on that transition to Carnegie time?
We were talking, we did do some conversations between the fifth, Sarah Hickey talked about what we're looking at, fifth-grade standards, and talked with the sixth-grade teachers about what are their needs that we need to make sure we're preparing students for.
Right.
So when we worked on the fifth-grade scope and sequence, we did take that into account. And we're going to then evaluate how that may or may not assist our sixth-grade teachers.
Right. I remember just even the math assessments are very strange for that age group that we just talked about prior years, that across the country, there's a strange issue that happens from fifth to sixth grade, and the way that the test is written even, and what content they're being taught. So I'm hoping that we continue to look at that and make sure they have a successful transition. I did have one more question about Hauser. I think I remember this correctly from my own child, but is there still time for them to flip the classroom and do some problems so that they have that teacher with them in class to practice, so that they're not just listening?
Like getting instruction and then going home and doing homework?
Exactly.
Yes, there is still time.
That's what I remember, but I would, because it's such a benefit to be able to bring your problem to the teacher and say, I don't understand what I'm doing. And to have, like you said, the twenty minutes of individual time. I think that's where those moments come from. And I just was gonna check in to see if that's still happening.
It does, yeah.
Great, thank you. Sorry to mess up your teacher list.
Oh, no. So our new staff members include, Carly Williamson is the new school psychologist at Hauser Junior High School. Claire Capp is our new early learners teacher. Jen Graff is our new third-grade teacher at Blythe Park Elementary School.
Two seconds, two third grade.
All right, that's cool.
Gabby Edberg is our new second-grade teacher at Ames Elementary School. When Jen Ullman became the Math Air Inventress, it opened up that position, so Gabby has taken that. Matt Loeb is our orchestra teacher for fifth grade. He is the gentleman that we are partnering with RB. So he teaches orchestra at RB, as well as orchestra at our four elementary schools. Mary Kate Myrna is our part-time early, or part-time English language learner teacher, servicing students at Hollywood Elementary School and Central Elementary School. Alicia Patterson is returning to the district. She was actually a previous employee here in Riverside Ninety-Six. She's returning to Central as a resource teacher.
Oh, that's interesting.
Katie Guerrero joins Central as well. She is our new social worker at Central. Carrie McCave is joining us at Hauser Junior High, teaching sixth-grade English Language Arts. Carol Swan is teaching band to our fifth-grade students at all elementary schools. So she'll be working with math closely. Emerson Duty is joining us, teaching art at Ames and Blythe Park. The great thing about Emerson is that she was actually, she student-taught here last spring.
Cool.
Yep, so she's, and she's student-taught at Ames of Life.
Boy, that's what the student teacher dreamed.
She's familiar with our community already and familiar with her two schools. And some of the kids actually remember her too, from when she was teaching her, so that's great. Jack DiStefano is our music teacher at Blythe Park and Ames. First-year teacher, very excited, and I've been in some of his classes already, and just very energetic. Heather Nestler is teaching eighth-grade English Language Arts at Hauser Junior High School. And Peggy Collings is teaching second grade at Central Elementary School. And interesting thing about Peggy is she has done a few long-term studying positions in our district. So it's great that, like, we were able to see who she is, kind of on-the-job training, on-the-job interview. And really impressed with all she had done as a long-term sub, and excited to have her join us on full-time staff. And that's our, those are our fourteen new staff members.
That's awesome. It's nice to get to see their faces and say their names.
They're not here, but.
No, yay!
Sarah Hickey.
Sarah Hickey did that.
Does it again.
I was curious, has Mr. Loeb's transitioning back and forth from RB to here? Is it going well?
It seems to be going really well. So I had said, because RB started school already by the time we did new teacher orientation, so I figured they probably needed him in the morning, even though he's scheduled to be with us. He's like, no, I want to learn what's happening. I want to learn about Riverside. So he was already making the transition even before school started. It seemed to have been pretty smooth. We haven't started lessons yet, so I will be checking in with him once we start the instrumental lessons. But he is great energy, very excited, and I just, I know it's gonna be okay.
Yeah, no, my daughter has him at RB in the afternoon, and all, still has lots of energy, so it must be going right.
This is generally the Ompar with the number of incoming students we bring in every year?
It is. I would say so. Would you say so? You've been here longer.
I think what's always interesting about new teacher mentoring and induction in a school district Riverside size is that it's used, like, it's a social worker, and it's a psychologist, and it's a music teacher, and an orchestra, you know? And so it's, you know, very large school districts might bring in a lot of new primary teachers. And instead, our mentoring has to be much more sort of customized and individualized, because even though like what they have in common is that they're new to District Ninety-Six, they're new to a teaching role, we want them to feel welcome and connected. And there's things about technology and where to find this and where to find that, but really their jobs are pretty different.
And a couple are just from retirees. Not a great proportion, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun to see those.
I'm gonna go into the non-strategic, well, strategic plan related, but not their responsibility type stuff. Yeah, so just in addition to, so, I mean, a lot of what we talked about was related to that. But Martha and I had some conversation around full-day kindergarten and just kind of, you know, what are some of the costs that are gonna be around that? The people that we need, like, how many teachers would we need to hire? Things like that, that we need to be aware of, as Angela and her team are going through, kind of assessing all of what that would look like. And I think a couple of things I was even thinking about is how might that actually change? I think somebody kind of brought up, how might that actually change our pipeline of students? Like, would that increase people participating in early childhood education because they can now translate into kindergarten, which Martha kind of told me we can, because that's outside of standard district protocol, we can actually kind of, we can control that a little bit better, whereas we can't with kindergarten. But if we had more, if we had full-day kindergarten, would that bring more people to the district? Would that have more people in kindergarten? Like, would our population increase? Trying to look at some of that on, you know, our first-grade, second-grade population. And if that trickles down, does that have an impact? And then that impacts teachers and all that other kind of stuff, right? So just kind of trying to put some of those pieces of the puzzle together, which Angela will get to do with the rest of the team in the next two. We, let's see, I already kind of mentioned the, I slotted in the work with, it's not Doctor, right? Just Mr.?
Nate, yeah, Mr.?
Eckland, Mr. Eckland, Nate Eckland. I thought there was some really good stuff there that he could provide. And it's like, kind of bits and pieces that Martha can bring us, and different costs and things like that. Like, what's a part of that cost would be good things here, but it sounded like for nine months of work with coaching, the survey, interpreting the survey, working with building leadership teams, it sounded like there's a lot of stuff there that you're working through, that we could talk about next time. But it sounded, just watching him, I'm kind of sold, so.
Oh, he's fun.
This is pretty good. The other thing we talked about was kind of working with staff, and it was, I don't know, let's see, I think, maybe we didn't actually have it as a key component indicator, but kind of around that satisfaction, overall staff satisfaction, is really rather than just sending out surveys and getting numbers and trying to interpret what does that mean, like really talking to people about, why do you say, hey, like, what do you like? What do you not like? And just kind of getting into some of that, you know, I think that helps build trust and in just collaboration and relationships and all that kind of stuff. And so there's a lot of good value to just, you know, talking to people and kind of being very intentional about what you're talking to them about, too. So that's something Martha's kind of taken away and kind of doing. And then we talked about our never, our never-started, I don't know what the right way is, stipend conversation? We keep talking about evaluating it, like, what do we want to look at? How do we want to say whether this is too much or not enough, and all that kind of stuff? But I figure we need to try to target that for the November meeting, where maybe we could really dig in and something against the two months, and plus the twenty-four-plus months we've already been thinking about it. But we could have maybe more of a targeted dialogue on that. We'll get through the other two goals next month, and then at that November one, you can look at that list, and Martha can put the list together. I think, I don't know if you've already done it, we didn't actually talk about super details on that, but like enrollment for the different things, like what's the cost per student? And trying to look at some of that data to say, hey, does this feel right? And do we want to try to put some parameters around it and give Martha some guidance on approving or removing potentially, things like that? So hopefully we can do that at the November meeting. And we talked about a number of other things, but a lot of that, I think, we'll just kind of like parse out as we get more into the goals and stuff like that. So kind of high level right now, just how does this fit in? Because as Martha said, with the arrows and everything, a lot of what Goal One and Goal Two is, fits into Goal Three, but Goal Three also impacts Goal Five and even Goal Four and all that kind of stuff. So we just kind of talked about the interrelativeness between that and kind of the big picture of things that, at the board table, what we really need. And then just some general feedback for the different committee works to kind of bring some of the suggestions and recommendations and things back to us.
Yeah, I know, years ago, we had very detailed stipend conversations. I want to remember those. So for me personally, I think it's a balance between, yes, what's the cost per student? Do the students enjoy it? But also what opportunities are we giving staff for those areas to really help them grow in areas of interest, plus things that are good for them? And then we have a little glitch with pandemic, where some of our teachers didn't get to do their clubs, just because we weren't allowed to meet, you know, for some of those things. So I think that'll be part of the conversation. But yeah, I definitely think it's worthwhile checking in, but. Yeah, that was interesting. Yeah. No, we definitely, they could use an update, but I'm hoping it can be a fun one.
Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, and I think, as Wesley said, we're just trying to think through the items that are really gonna fall under Personnel Committee. And again, same with all the board committees, they're all very interwoven, too. But especially as we look at kind of the strategic plan globally, that kind of forecasting what's potentially on our future agenda. So thank you, Wesley, for that.
All right.
Okay, David. Are we gonna look, is David, oh, he's still there. There he is.
Yes, well, thanks to the Education and Personnel Committees. So that brings us to Finance.
There he is.
Sure, I don't have much tonight, but just, I know that this is gonna be coming up as we talk about the strategic plan, especially like Goal Number Five, dealing with the unskilled stewards of our resources. And so I know a number of these goals are going to bubble up into sort of finance discussions. So Mr. Fitch and I are going to be meeting this month to start talking about this in preparation for the next round of ACOV.
All right. Thanks, David. All right, that brings us back around to public comment. Has there been any public comment?
There has not.
All right. That brings us then to future meeting dates. Next meeting is September fifteenth, the regular business meeting at seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen, if necessary, and return to open session at seven. October sixth is Committee of the Whole, seven PM, multipurpose room at Ames. Did we have a discussion about changing these up, or we're not quite there yet?
I think we decided we're gonna stay at Ames.
We're staying for here for now? Okay.
We're flexible, as long as we noted in our agenda, I think we decided that this was working well for us for a period of time, that we're still masked and socially distanced.
Okay.
Can we maybe do more of a dive-in?
We could try more of a dive-in, yeah.
Yeah, I could see, yeah, I think I agree. That would make sense.
Kind of like the wedge type things.
Yeah, I'm still doing that, yeah.
Kathy, you got that idea?
We're just gonna try every configuration out. I will say that I really do appreciate.
Oh, yeah, that's still so much better.
It's, yes, a little, little less formal, a little less, we're seeing eye to eye to the people presenting, which is a better thing, I think.
We talked about doing this for Committee of the Whole, but not for regular board.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
More formal voting and stuff like that.
All right, so let's see, so that is October sixth, twenty twenty-one, Committee of the Whole, seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames Elementary. October twentieth, it is the regular business meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames Elementary. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen, if necessary, and return to open session at seven. And that brings us to the end. If there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.